It was good, what about yours? It was quiet. Mine was quiet.
What's happening dude? How you doing?
What's up? Scott. Man. I'd be dead if it was me. I'm dead.
I'd be dead to death.
Yeah.
That's a sad thing to say. Yes, that's sad.
I'd be dead. Like I said, I'm dead, hey yo.
That's what I mean, sad.
One of them protesting during the storm.
There's an encounter. So, I haven't been able to look at the news. So, did they actually storm it or protest? They got in, got security?
There's a guy, there's a picture of him sitting at the speaker's table like a iPad or something.
And they haven't tried anything?
No.
I don't mind.
They're breaking glass and breaking windows. Trying to...
No, they're four times.
You guys should stop.
They shouldn't be shot. I gotta go shoot a couple of them, maybe I'll stop.
Not that I believe in shooting people, but...
I don't believe in that either. Just lost a damn election, people lose a lot of time.
No, no. Laura.
Embarrassed. Same, same.
Mr. Really? If you're impatient, you don't try to say anything?
This is absolutely crazy, man.
If you're impatient, you decide to say anything, you're going to leave before I might see. Just give a shout.
Happy New Year, Adam. I need a cleaning. He's what?
I'm still clear.
I'm not doing the MPCs. Are there groups coming? Other members?
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. PM or just likely after, we'd like to welcome you to the regularly scheduled public hearing on the Shreveport-Cattle Parish Metropolitan Planning Commission. We normally begin our meeting with a prayer and a pledge of allegiance. If you care to join us with the invocation and the pledge, please stand. Let us pray. Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this opportunity to be present and to be called servants. We thank you for the opportunity to share and deliberate the request of our citizens from the Shreveport-Cattle Parish area. We pray for wisdom, knowledge, and understanding as we deliberate their request. We also pray for peace in our country, especially on this day at our Capitol. It is in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Please, darling players. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic with which stands one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Curtis. For the public hearing agenda items, if you wish to make public comments on an application, we have MPC comment slips at the speaker's stand next to the podium right down front. For further notification purposes, it is very important that you fill out a slip and drop it in the box when you come forward to speak. Please state your full name, your mailing address, and zip code before addressing the board. We will call each case on the agenda in order and hear first from the MPC staff case manager, then the applicant, then those speaking in favor. Ten minutes are allocated for the principal spokesperson and three minutes for each additional speaker. We will then hear from those wishing to speak against an application. Again, ten minutes are allocated for the principal spokesperson and three minutes for each additional speaker. One representative of the application can then speak in rebuttal if desired. After hearing comments on each case, the board will then immediately deliberate and vote on that case before moving on to the next case on the agenda. Please note that when the board is deliberating, members of the public are not permitted to make comments. All members of the public may request a copy of the board's decision on a particular case by contacting our office at 318-673-6480 after 1:00 PM on tomorrow, or by accessing our website at shreveportcattlempc.com. For consent agenda items and other agenda items not requiring a public hearing, public comments can be made upon request by filling out an MPC comment slip. If comments are requested for a specific agenda item, the chair will offer an opportunity for those comments prior to the commission taking action on the agenda item. All of the MPC board's zoning recommendations are submitted to either the city council or the parish commission for a final decision, depending on the location of the property in question. Please note that it is your responsibility to contact the appropriate governing body about their procedures as related to the matter you are concerned with. Copies of this document and the phone numbers to contact governing bodies are available on the table next to the podium and in the entryway to this room. As a courtesy, please remember to turn off all cell phones while the MPC board is in session. The commission values your testimony and appreciates your compliance with these guidelines. Before we call the first case, we would like to invite Mr. Clark to take personal privilege in introducing our new board member, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It is with great pleasure that I introduce the newest appointee that's appointed by the Cattle Parish Commission, Mr. Rudolph Rudy Moulton. He comes to us originally from Cleveland, Ohio. He shared with me that he was a scholar of Bowling Green, and he's done some very interesting things in the community, and we are extremely pleased and excited about welcoming him and having him on the board.
Alright, sir, thank you very much. At this particular time, as we move forward, I'll call for a motion on the minutes for approval. Some move. Motion by Mr. Curtis and second by?
Second.
Ms. Demartel. All those in favor, please vote yes. Okay. I was waiting on you, Mr. Chair. Alright, and I'm sorry, I didn't know I needed to look back. The motion passes, thank you very much. At this particular time, we'll move into our consent agenda at this time. We have two items, case number 20-14-SC, final plat. Is there anyone here present for that? Alright, any opposition to that one? The next case is case number 20-15-SC, final plat. Anyone here for that one? Alright, this is a consent agenda item. You do understand that. Alright. At this particular time, we'll invite a motion to approve case number 20-14-SC. Some move. Motion by Mr. Curtis, second by?
A second.
Ms. Demartel. All those in favor, please vote yes. Alright, that motion carries. This particular time, we're at case number 20-15-SC, final plat, Lakeside, RMA. If you care to make a comment, sir, please step forward.
I'm here for 2015 SC. My name's Robert Aiello, I'm the developer. If anyone has any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. Other than that, I'm a... I don't have anything other than that to say.
Isn't that part of the consent?
Well, it was on our consent agenda. We had it, it was ready to go. We didn't realize... We thought maybe there was some opposition there.
Nope.
Alright. If there's no opposition to case number 20-15-SC, we'll entertain... Yes, sir, please come forward. For the record, if you'll state your name and address, please.
My name is Larry Russo, 8912 Crestville Road, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71106. And I'm in support of this. I just was asking, are the zone, the two other...
They're on this agenda.
Are they later? I was looking at the written agenda and I was having...
They're on the agenda at a later time. This is just in the consent agenda for...
I apologize. Thank you.
That's quite alright. For the benefit of the audience who are trying to figure out what's going on, occasionally there are requests that are turned in or submitted where there appears to be no challenges or problems. And in this case, these two items were put on the agenda for consent only. So, at this particular time, I'll entertain a motion for approving case number 20-15-SC. Some move. Motion by Mr. Curtis, second by?
Second.
Ms. Demartel. All those in favor, please vote yes. Alright, that motion carried, thank you very much. We'll move into our scheduled public hearing. Case number 20-11-P is a zoning request. Advocate Moore and Associates, owner Testament Real Estate LLC. Before you come, at this time, Mr. Moore, we'll invite Mr. Stephen Jean to tell the audience just a little bit about this particular case before we move forward. Thank you.
I'm sorry, well...
Hold on, just a second.
Yes, Mr. Chair. This case is, of course, the applicant is Mr. Moore and Associates. It is 7115 Greenwood Road, which is the south side of Greenwood Road at Calderwood Drive. It is currently zoned residential agriculture or rural agriculture. The request is to change that from to C1, C3, and IMU, and basically of tearing that zoning from Greenwood Road down, all the way down to I-20, to IMU. Staff has reviewed this and is recommending approval.
Alright, sir. Thank you very much. Mr. Craig.
Andy Craig with Moore and Associates, 1324 North Hearn, Suite 301, Shreveport, 71107. I'm here representing Testament Real Estate, Testament Construction. I'll apologize to y'all in advance. It's really hard to hear right here with these screens. I could hear you better back on the back row than I could standing up here, so... And I'm harder hearing anyway, so y'all bear with me. As you know, we were here last month and we needed to make the... Meet with the neighborhood and discuss some things, and so we requested a deferral to this meeting. And a little bit of history on the project. Mr. Little, Bart Little is here with us today. He'll say, want to say something when I get through. But he is the owner of Testament Construction and the property, Testament Real Estate, and the property that we're requesting a rezoning. And Mr. Little had been approached by different people about possible equipment dealerships on the frontage of Interstate, on his frontage of I-20 there. And so, he got to putting things together and decided his yard is existing in there, about the middle where the curve is there, and his construction yard. And so, he decided, well, we need to get this rezoned, RA existing zoning, put some lots in, and some street for access, of course. And so, as we got into it, I talked to him about what he wanted to put in there, and we decided I-1 was probably the best zone for what he wanted to do. Well, in consultation with the staff, IMU turned out to be best. That's a new designation from UDC, so we're not quite used to considering that. But anyway, they pointed it out to me, and they were right. It's a perfect fit for what Mr. Little wants to do there, which is some light industrial and truck dealerships, equipment dealerships such as that, and then his construction yard also. But in response to the neighborhood there, we really, we realized, and the staff pointed out to us that I-1, IMU was really not proper right up there across the street from the RA and RE zones, as you can see, the residential areas. So, we discussed it, and we decided the best thing to do is to request the C1 on the Greenwood Road frontage lots, which is some light retail comparable with the neighborhood there, and then a little bit heavier C3 in the middle to even give more buffer to what would be the IMU at the back. And so, we met with the Western Hills people, homeowners associations, area associations there back in December. We answered a lot of questions. Mr. Little told them, explained what his ideal was there for development. There was nothing detrimental to the neighborhood. Mr. Little will probably tell you when he gets up. He was raised in this part of town, he knows it very well, and is not planning on doing anything that would detract from the neighborhood. But his primary goal is to be able to offer, per some requests, some, and a little more industrial sites on the interstate frontage for some dealerships and such as that, construction related. So, with that, I'll be able to answer, be glad to answer any questions y'all might have for me.
I had a question. One of the, some of the photos that we received reference to the equipment there, can you say a little bit about what possibly happened to today?
I'm sorry, you'll have to repeat that.
Can you tell us a little bit about the equipment that's there and what the plans are for that?
Yes, his plan, as I understand it, is to, he's been there for twenty-some odd years or more, and as you know, with construction, it has accumulated. And part of the reason he wants to do this is to clean his yard up. He'll have to move it back to some of the lots on the close interstate in the IMU area. Do you have a layout of the lots we had? Oh, that's the zone. We had a street and some lots. I might have it here. Now, there, there it is. See, you can see the lot layout. Actually, that's an old layout. We consolidated it to one single entrance. After talking with the neighborhood and DOTD, we're going to go to one single entrance, close to where that easterly one was. So, we're coming in one entrance and making a loop rather than coming out there at Calderwood. That was not a good idea for the neighbors nor with DOTD. So, but the lot layout is pretty similar. We just adjusted that street according to the comments that we got. And so, Mr. Little will be moving his yard and construction site back to one of these lots if, yeah, after we get it finalized.
Ladies and gentlemen, any questions for Mr. Craig? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else care to speak in favor?
Good afternoon. Bart Little, 5057 Dixie Garden, 71105. See, I've been at this location for approximately 23, 24 years. I was raised in Western Hills. I grew up at 6406 Santa Monica. My first job ever was working in Timberline Subdivision for Tri-State Concrete when they developed this area. So, I, this has been home to me. And I definitely don't want to do anything to adversely affect this area. But like I say, my own yard has been there, and we were, we've been blessed, and we're going to be able to expand, hopefully, and build a newer facility back on the IMU if all of this is approved in that area. And when we met with the neighborhood association and I, you know, I wanted to try and assure them, there were some things they had concerns about. And with my conversation with Andy, the most restrictive thing that I can do is a deed restriction to give the neighbors there some assurances. And I'm gladly willing to do that. They didn't want any kind of liquor stores. They didn't want any kind of a halfway house. Nothing that was any kind of adult entertainment, anything like that. I don't have any problem putting a deed restriction or whatever would help ease their angst about this. We want to be good neighbors, and, you know, the, that's just what we're trying to do. We want to have some good type businesses on the front of Greenwood Road, hopefully. I don't have any, nothing hard in plans. Nobody's come to me and said, we want to come right there. A lot of this is projected, and we have been approached by a major equipment dealership that would like to come for the I-20 area. But that's kind of what we have. I'll be glad to answer any questions for anybody.
Alright. Board members, any questions for Mr. Little?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Clark?
This is Bessie's here. I have some questions because I noticed you said that you did have a neighborhood meeting. And with some neighborhood meetings, from all of these petitions and letters that I have received, they are letting you know that they really don't want it there. I heard you say you met with them.
Did you cut it off?
Ma'am?
She was talking to you.
Okay, I did meet with the neighborhood association. She said we didn't meet with them?
No, I didn't. I, I said you met with them, and most of them oppose what you're trying to do in their neighborhood.
They, they, I'm sorry, are you saying they oppose?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. I, I understand that. I would be glad to work with to try and see what we could do to reduce the opposition.
Alright, Ms. Bessie, any more questions?
No.
Alright, thank you, ma'am.
I'll be answering later.
Alright, Mr. Clark?
Just real briefly, because we never did get a clear understanding. Can you hear me, Mr. Little?
Yes, sir.
We didn't get a clear understanding what you plan to do with the equipment that you have stored close to Greenwood Road presently. And I think that would help everybody have a more comfortable approach to what you're doing. Because it doesn't look that attractive.
I agree, and that is, we can immediately move some of that equipment back away from the road. I can, I can do that just as soon as it is dry enough. But if we can get this approved, my yard will be moved to the IMU area. I will, my facility will be torn down and moved back, you know. But immediately, I can, I can move, and I understand, I, we've just accumulated them with wet weather. Everything kind of gets stacked where it kind of can fit. And we've actually been over there trying to clean up some here in the last, oh, sixty days some. But we can continue to do more of that and move some of the equipment we have on our yard back away from Greenwood Road, you know, to help with the ice on us of that. But if all this is approved, we will build a new facility in the IMU area. Because, and I guess that's one of the things, I want, my, they were concerned about the aesthetics. My business will be, continue to be there if we can get all this approved. It will just be moved back. So, it kind of is a win-win. I see that, you know, that way.
Mr. Clark, okay. Any questions from board members? Alright. Mr. Little? Thank you. At this particular time, is there anyone else present who care to speak in favor of this request? Anyone care to speak in favor of this request? Is there anyone present who'd care to speak in opposition to this request? Anyone present who'd care to speak in opposition to this request?
Please note, Mr. Chair, you have a letter of opposition in front of you from the property owners, the neighborhood associations, that Mr. Little did have an opportunity to meet with.
Did, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Demartel.
Maybe to Alan. Did most of these, did most of the opposition come before the neighborhood met and where you guys decided to move it to IMU instead of a C1 or C3?
The opposition in summary has just been that, I don't think that we were able to convey to the citizens exactly what was being proposed. And they got the opinion prior to the meeting that all kind of negative things were happening, like Mr. Little has alluded to. And once those type rumors, for lack of a better term, begin to circulate, it's awfully difficult to come to any agreements or conclusions, positive conclusions. And that's what we believe. We cannot speak for the neighborhood associations, but we believe that that's part of the reason for the opposition.
But the MPC staff, and I see you're just, you are recommending for approval for the IMU, right?
The IMU, the C3, and the C1.
Oh, all of, okay.
For all of them, I mean, we believe that the C1 along Greenwood Road is a light commercial zoning class that will not be intrusive and not offensive to residential development. As you move closer to the I-20, the C3 and the IMU, the uses get a little heavier. We reviewed the development trend from Pines Road to Burke Coons with I-20 frontage and concluded that this was in, this was in line with the development pattern that's going on presently out in the area. And that was the reason for our recommendation for approval. I think that part of the reason is that everyone is always suspicious or speculative resorting. And we've dealt with that over the years, because many times, a property owner needs to get his property zoned in order to be able to market it. Just for informational purposes, we provided at that meeting all of the uses that would be allowed in the C1, the C3, and the IMU, especially for the neighborhood associations, so that they would understand what could possibly go wrong.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question. With the plot, if you attend a neighborhood meeting with them?
Ms. Bessie, would you care to repeat that, please?
I wanted to know if you attend a neighborhood meeting in that area.
Yes, ma'am. I believe, I believe he stated that he did attend the meeting.
I was at the meeting. Mr. Jean, the Deputy Director, Adam Bailey, and Reginald Jordan, all were at the meeting to answer any questions that the neighborhood associations had, along with the... along with the applicant, property owner, and the engineer.
Does that answer your question, Ms. Smith? All right, thank you, ma'am. Board members, are there any questions or comments of Mr. Little? Normally, when there's questions after an opposition, we offer an opportunity for a rebuttal. But no one has spoken against it in their present. I don't think it's necessary for you to have to come back to the mic unless you just feel the urge.
He, he really can't come back, Mr. Smith.
All right, then there's no need for you to come back. Okay. Thank you. Board members, at this particular time, do you have any questions to the staff relative to their recommendation?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Joseph.
Okay, I'm looking here and I'm trying to count all these people who signed their name in opposition to this. And it looks like it's going to be in the hundreds. Is that correct?
I think that there are quite a few names that have been signed by, and in opposition to this application. We did not physically count the number, but...
It's like about 11 on the page and I'm over 10, 15 pages here. My concern is that's a lot of people. I mean, is that the whole neighborhood?
These, these situations, Mr. Joseph, are extremely difficult and we've had experience with them. I, I truly don't believe that the, the neighborhood is truly knowledgeable of what's being proposed. As I shared with you, a lot of times with speculative zoning, one of the things that, that frightens neighborhoods most is not knowing what could possibly come. And regardless to what is made available for them to, to review to see what could possibly come, they remember in most instances, as you well know, they remember the negative things that they've been told that, that could possibly happen. And Mr. Little shared with you and as he shared at that meeting, he was willing to do a deed restriction to, to prevent anything that was offensive to the neighborhood from coming into his property. He had also agreed to share with the neighborhood, to sit down and do design review with the neighborhood to, to do design, especially along Greenwood Road, that would be a plea, would be a pleasing to those subdivision residents immediately across the street. Said something more of a neighborhood scale would, would be acceptable to him. But like, like I shared with you, I think that the neighborhood's mind was made up long before we got there.
They were all present.
Yeah. I think their mind was made up before we got there. And we went through the, the process of trying to, to share as much information as, as possible that could be shared. But at the end, this is, this is where the neighborhood responded.
So their concerns were not delayed?
Their concerns were addressed, but their concerns, to the best of his ability, the best of our ability, were addressed, but we did not effectively put them in a position of comfort.
Thank you. Do we have any more questions for Mr. Clark relative, or the staff members relative to this particular request?
Yes, Ms. Smith. I, as I looked at all of the names in that neighborhood, and I can understand they are letting you know this is something we just don't know in our neighborhood.
Anything else, Ms. Bessie? Was that it?
Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Board members, if there are no further questions, we'll entertain a motion if you have no other questions relative to this particular request.
I make a motion to deny?
We have a motion by Mr. Curtis. We need a second. Second by Ms. Bessie Smith. All those in favor of denying this motion, please vote yes. If you are not in favor of denying this motion, vote no.
I'm in favor of denying.
All right, then that motion fails. At this particular time, we'll entertain a, a motion to vote in favor of this request. Or is that necessary, Mr. Attorney?
It is necessary, yes, sir.
We need a motion. All right, we need a motion to vote in favor because only two votes, there were only two votes who voted to not approve this request. So we need a motion.
Well, can I ask something? Is there any way that they can have another meeting with the neighbors and explain all the details? Or they, they already did that?
We had four staff members go and be present at the meeting from the office and the gentleman who owns the property.
And we still got all these signatures and all this.
But he's, he has, the owner, as I see it, has offered to continue to meet with them as he's designing, as he's putting things out. Is that correct, Mr.?
That, that is correct. And whatever happens in this process, the staff is still committed to working with the landowner and the neighborhoods to, to come up with agreements that they both can live with. And we would, I don't think it will do any good now for us to try to conduct another meeting, but we still are committed to working with both parties ensuring that if this goes forward, the next step will be the design of, of the development. And we will continue to try it with their assistance. We cannot force persons in the neighborhoods, associations to meet, but with their assistance. We will continue to work with them to help them to come to a conference zone with this development.
Mr. Clark, I have one question relative to the information that Mr. Curtis alluded to. The date of the petition versus the date of your meeting with the community. What, do you remember the date you met with the group?
I think Mr. Jean might have it on his phone. I don't remember the exact date. We're looking for it.
It appears that the petitions were signed October the 24th, unless I'm wrong.
December 10.
December 10.
I'm sorry.
That's when the petition was done? We met with them December 10.
All right, so you met with them.
If you recall, Mr. Chairman, we requested that you defer and continue the application to allow an opportunity for Mr. Little and the neighborhood associations to meet. We had some experiences with COVID-19 and the ability to find a location where we could comfortably meet and practice social distancing. And once they arranged the meeting, we all attended that meeting.
All right. So that meeting was held after these petitions were signed?
Yes, sir.
All right. Any other comments or questions, Ms. Demartel?
Yeah, it would be too overreaching to put into any steps that he would need to at least attempt to try to work with the neighborhood when it comes to design and deed restrictions and stuff like that? Or should we just?
I'm trying to come, there is not a methodology to, conditions. I feel confident, and I may be wrong, and I've been wrong many times before in my life. But I feel confident if I asked Mr. Little and Mr. Craig to meet again, they would be more than happy to, to do so. It's, it's just a situation, as I stressed very strongly, it has to be a desire on the part of the neighborhood associations to meet. These gentlemen have never refused to do whatever we've asked them to do in reference to this development.
So you're, I'll do a motion to approve. Is it the alternative zoning designation not requested by the applicant? Is that what we're?
When we started out, the, the, the application was for industrial, I-1, for the whole 49 acres. And then we met with Mr. Craig and Mr. Little and made the suggestions about the light commercial.
Right, and that's the alternative rezoning.
Yeah, that's why that came about.
I make a motion to approve for the alternative one.
All right. Before you make that motion, Ms. Demartel, I had a comment.
Just, just the comment that even if this zoning is approved, there's, there's still a process to go through on the submittal and approval for site plan for these, these functions. And that would come back to the MPC again at that point. So just, just to kind of answer, I guess where you were going with this, is there any kind of mandate or stipulation? It's part of the process. So it's going to happen.
I wanted to put it out there. Thank you.
All right.
And in that case, I'd second your motion.
All right, we have a motion by Ms. Demartel and a second by Mr. Elverson in favor of this petition. All those in favor, please vote yes. Opposition, vote no. All right, the motion is carried. Thank you very much, board members. The next case on the agenda is case...
Did we record Ms. Smith, Mr. Chair?
I'm sorry.
Did we record Ms. Smith?
Yes, we had, Ms. Smith, she got it. All right, we're ready for case number 20-14-P zoning request. Shreveport, Calo, MPC is the applicant.
Yes, sir. This case was prompted by the, the staff due to the fact that this property was once zoned R1C, which was a 9,000 square foot minimum lot size under the previous zoning code. When the zoning code, when the zoning was changed through the UDC, there was no longer an intermediate zoning classification. And the developer wanted to continue that same pattern, which was at least 10,000 square foot lots. In order to do that, they would have to rezone the property to a lesser district. As you may recall, we did talk, later in the, in the meeting, we will talk about a long-term solution for this. But right now, we're just talking about going ahead and approving this to go to R17. And that's the staff's recommendation at this point.
All right, sir.
And, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Clark.
Now is the time when I would truly appreciate Mr. Russo and Mr. Aiello to come up because they have submitted a document verifying that once the appropriate zoning district is in place, that they would immediately come back in and request the R110 zoning. They've done an incredible job in working to resolve the situation.
All right, Mr. Clark, first gentleman gets 10 minutes and the second gentleman gets three. Who is the principal spokesperson?
You don't have to have 10.
You don't have to use a 10 minute, just letting you know.
My name is Robert Aiello, 300 Benton Road, Bossier City, Louisiana. I'm the developer of Lakeside, really 1 through 7. We've worked with the, the homeowner association and all the residents, the landowner, which is represented by Mr. Russo, and basically have come to a resolution that everyone agrees on that, that the MPC, if you'll approve the R17, everybody in the neighborhood, the landowner, the homeowner association are all in favor of that. And as the developer, I'm in favor of when you work out your, I'll call it R110, which will designate everything's going to be 10,000 square feet or greater, I'll be happy to sign or approve whatever is submitted. All the lots that are in the proposed Unit 7 exceed 10,000 square feet. All the lots in Unit 4 and 6 also fall into that same category. And I'll work with the MPC or the city or the parish to make sure that we get the zoning done correctly after this R17 is approved. So if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer the question.
All right, staff, board members, I'm sorry, any questions for Mr. Aiello? Saying none, we'll invite anyone else forward who care to speak in favor of this request.
Larry Russo, 8912 Crestwell, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71106. I, I just confirm what Robert said. I mainly worked in communication with the homeowners association and some of the owners that filed in opposition previously. And then I worked with Mr. Jean and Mr. Clark to facilitate getting all the appropriate paperwork done. So unless somebody has any more questions, I think we have all this in a nice, neat package to protect everybody's interest going forward.
All right, sir, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
In view of the December meeting, quite a bit of enthusiasm came along. And I think it, it has caused us all to come to a gentleman's agreement that this will be positive for everyone involved. Can I assume that?
Absolutely. That's wonderful. Thank you.
All right, sir, thank you. Any other comments from staff members since you were the applicant? Hearing none, I'll call for a motion.
Just like I said, Mr. Chair, we, we...
I'm sorry.
I thought we did a, had an excellent opportunity to work with a very difficult situation. We, we don't like to delay development. We don't like to be obstructionist of any form or fashion, but we felt that this would solve their problem with a long-lasting solution to the problem here and in other parts of the city. We're very, we're very gracious to them that they worked through this process with us. And I think everybody will be happy for what we've done.
Thank you very much, sir. Before I move forward, I failed to ask if there was anyone present in opposition to this request? Anyone present in opposition? Hearing none, I'll call for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Demartel, second by...
Second.
Second by Mr. Elverson. All those in favor, please vote yes. She said yes. All right, that motion, that request is approved. Case number 20-124-C will be presented to us. Yes, sir.
Let's have one real quick question on the picture that I just looked at.
You may want to ask that to staff members over there. At this particular time, we'll invite Mr. Alex Carrera to come forward.
Excuse me, sir.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to step out because I have a commercial relationship with this account. So I'm just going to get out of the room.
All right, thank you.
Hi, good afternoon. This is case 20-124-C for 1343 Captain Shreve Drive. The applicant is requesting approval of a C2 small planned unit development to allow the addition of outdoor vehicle sales at an existing vehicle repair shop. This case was deferred last month to allow the MPC staff to review and consider the neighborhood's proposed list of amenities. We have done so, made some modifications to that list, which have been agreed to by the owner. And based on that information and evaluation of the surrounding area, the staff is recommending approval of the planned unit development and the submitted site plan.
All right, Ms. Carrera, thank you very much. Any questions for Ms. Carrera? Thank you. At this time, we'll invite Captain Shreve Auto representative, if you're present. Anyone present with Captain Shreve Auto?
I'm not with them, but I'd like to speak on behalf.
You're welcome to come forward, please, ma'am.
Good afternoon. I'm Suzanne Phillips of 6133 Lover's Lane, Shreveport, 71105. I'm going to speak on behalf of myself and one of my committee members here. We started this process when he, Malik, the business owner of Captain Shreve Auto, had requested a C3 zoning. And our neighborhood was kind of struck that there were maybe only like... a C3 zoning. And our neighborhood was kind of struck that there were maybe only like 20 houses, less than 20, that were notified because of the way things are set. But we did mobilize and were able to get together and stop the requests. The business owner did withdraw the C3 and then come back and request the current spud amenities. During this process, Ms. Kay Camp, Content Cortez, and I, I represent the Captain Shreve Neighborhood Association, Kay represents the condo association. And we were able to meet with Director Clark and Ms. Alice on a Zoom meeting. It was very productive. We were very, very pleased with how that went and the willingness of Director Clark to hear us and to really not just give us the time, but to really truly listen. And Director Clark wanted to thank you so much for that. We feel that including the neighborhood has come with a terrific outcome. I know, Alice, we put you to a lot of work and we thank you for what you've done. I would like to read something that Kay, she cannot be here, but she had sent this and would like it read. So this is on behalf of Ms. Kay Camp. I'm pleased with the Captain Shreve Neighborhood, Neighborhood, along with Anderson Isle and Dixie Garden, and the business owner met and agreed to public amenities, specifically the bike rack, a shrub barrier, and a large merril. Those amenities will enhance the casual neighborhood feel the residents enjoy and will not overly restrict, be restrictive of the business owner, because that was one of our concerns. We didn't want to, you know, make this so overly expensive for him to do, to get the spud. I particularly enjoyed the Zoom meeting Executive Director Alan Clark and MPC Planner Alice Coria had with three of us residents. We all worked hard and learned a lot and are very pleased with the outcome. After my experience with this project, I'm very hopeful that positive outcomes can result from more direct communication between business owners, residents in the neighborhoods where zoning changes are proposed, the MPC staff, and our elected officials. John Nicholson and Jim Talafaro were both very helpful in the project's positive outcome. This cooperative way of doing business can help build a better Shreveport. And I hope, I would love to be able to, if ever needed, be a go-between, like listening regarding with the neighborhood at Greenwood Road. I'm sitting back there thinking all some things that could be done to mediate that, to help the citizens feel like they are having a great input. I loved what you had asked about, you know, is there any way to lock it in, because I'm thinking the same thing. But I also appreciate that through the process, there will be, and I think if citizens can see that we do have a voice, and it's not just, okay, this is what the business owner wants and this is what they're gonna get. But I think if, as a community, as a city, if we know that, we can come together with our business owners for really good outcomes, where everyone feels good about it. If we just will come to the table and let Director Clark, Executive Director Clark, with open minds. If we come with closed minds, there's not any hope. But if we can come together, that's the way. And as President of Captain Shreve Neighborhood Association, I'm available if you even just want to have, you know, someone with the neighborhood to say, call them and see how they did it. Because I think the template that we've laid is a pretty good one, and it came with a really good outcome. Everyone kind of tussled and gave a little, but I think it worked out. So I appreciate y'all's time, very much appreciate your time that you gave us. Ms. Alice, I appreciate you too, and thank y'all so much. And we are in favor of this moving forward as long as it stays with just two cars for sale and that it doesn't encroach on anything else. Thank y'all.
Ma'am, before you leave the mic, would you care to put it, put all that in writing?
I do have some of it.
I know it's been recorded, but it's so nice to hear that kind of explanation as to what the process is.
Thank you.
And we appreciate your participation.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I would like to say something. This is as you mentioned, officially.
She can hear you.
Okay, I too would like to thank you, Mr. Clark and your staff, with citizens' and people's input, letting you know that you all really done a fantastic job in helping them. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you so much, that's very sweet. Thank y'all.
Thank you, ma'am. Before we move forward, did I hear someone? Mr. Carter?
Just very briefly, Mr. Chair, it was really an exciting time working with this neighborhood association because it instilled in our thoughts that neighborhood participation does work if we can bring together. It's a difficulty, and as you all know, this is a very new and embryonic program, concept that we're trying to implement. But when you get people to, the interesting thing about this neighborhood, they thought that we were requiring too much of the business to do, and they stayed on Alice to, you know, reduce the cost of the amenities that the business had to do in order to get the approval of the special use permit. It shows, I mean, I'm really encouraged and I hope that we can keep you excited about, but if you come to the table, and we promote coming to the table, that's why we were encouraging it being mandatory. But if you come to the table and you come to the table with open minds, the possibilities are beyond the sky. And we're really encouraged by this. And we will continue to have a relationship with both of these ladies because they made, they made a true impact on the staff.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Clark. In accordance to protocol, is there anyone else here to speak in favor of this request? Is there anyone here who care to speak in opposition to this request? Any opposition to this request? Hearing none, I'll invite a motion from board members.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Demartel. Second by Ms. Bessie Smith. All those in favor, please vote. Motion carries, thank you very much. Mr. Carter, I made some notes relative to the next case. Do we need to go ahead and call that, or is there-
Ms. Carrera will call.
Ms. Carrera, all right. That's what I was trying to get to.
And good afternoon, again. This is case 20-151-C, 1519 Crestwell Avenue. The owner is reapplying for a special use permit for an office and expanded parking in the RHU District. Last month, the applicant requested to defer the case in order to look into options that would not require Jordan Street access for the extra parking. We provided them some assistance with coming up with some possible options. They are nearing a solution, but they don't have it finalized yet. So the applicant has submitted in writing a request to defer the case until February.
All right, Ms. Alice, thank you very much. Board members, you heard the request on the part of the applicant?
Some of them.
There may be someone that's here who want to speak, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, is there someone present who care to speak in reference to this case? All right, I see a visual sign of no. All right, anyone in opposition? We'll entertain a motion. Motion to defer and continue by- Motion to defer and continue by Mr. Curtis Joseph and second by Ms. Bessie Smith. All those in favor, please vote.
Yes.
Motion's carried, thank you very much. It is deferred and continued. Next item is case number 20-4CAE, closure and abandonment to City of Shreveport. And Ms. Emily will do the presentation.
All right, Emily Trant, 505 Travis Street, Suite 440. All right, so this application was submitted by the City of Shreveport Engineering Department. It's to close and abandon two portions of Coltrane Way that are undeveloped. Upon further analysis from staff, we did not find that there would be any negative impact of this, so our recommendation is for approval.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Any questions for Ms. Emily? Hearing none, is there anyone present who would care to speak in opposition to this request on the part of the city? Hearing none, we'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Joseph.
Second.
Second by Mr. Elverson. All those in favor, please vote yes.
Yes.
Motion's carried. Case number 20-142-C, special use permit and site plan. This is gonna be presented by Ms. Alice again.
So now, this one is the one that I step out.
Okay. Thank you.
Good afternoon, this is case 20-142-C, 9464 Mansfield Road. The applicant is requesting approval of a special use permit. They have an existing cigar bar that they would like to add alcohol service to their customers there. It is an existing multi-tenant center. Since that site, or that center already has a restaurant serving alcohol, the site itself is already configured to accommodate and meet the use standards for a bar and any of the SUP approval standards. So based on the information provided and evaluation of the surrounding area, the staff is recommending approval of the SUP and the site plan.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Anyone present from Tobacco Discount House? You'll state your name and address, please.
Rebecca Walter, 2063 Evergreen Drive, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71118.
Could you state that last name one more time?
Walter.
Thank you.
And I'm just here if anybody has any questions.
All right, any questions for this applicant from board members? All right, well, hearing none. Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else present who care to speak in favor of this applicant? Anyone present who care to speak in opposition to this request?
Good afternoon, I'm Connie Sanders, 3025 Burson Drive, 71118. Our house, the back of where this proposed bar will be, will be run into our backyard. And there's a fence, but we've had so many things to take care of with all the different businesses lined up against our backyard, keeping it clean, keeping the fence in good condition. And there's been loud music coming from there in the middle of the night. We found a needle, syringe, we found, you know, it's just, it's not good for the neighborhood. And with our house being right there, we're really concerned.
All right, board members, any questions for this Ms. Sanders?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I think I heard, like, we've been saying, it's difficult to hear from these, from these cubicles, or whatever they refer to as. But the hours of operation that they're proposing are 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Monday through, Wednesday to Thursday, and 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. on Saturday, and 11:00 to 7:00 p.m. on Sunday. I don't know if that helps with the opposition to the use, but we're just trying to find, you know, out the concerns. I think one of those concerns was that loud music late at night, which we can, we can address. But I don't know if there are any other concerns, we can't deal with the needles or anything of that nature.
Just keeping it clean and the idea of having people in there, you know, that are that close to our property that may drink too much, or, you know, just, you know, trying to keep our neighborhood clean and neat and safe.
From what I hear you saying, Ms. Sanders, is that the only business there, or are there several businesses?
No, there's several. Olson's, and there was another restaurant, but it's closed. And there's a nail salon, and I think, and then the cigar, the tobacco house.
So this is a strip mall, basically, is what you're describing.
Right, right. And it all lines up on our backyard.
It's my understanding that this business is open now, and they just wanted to add the alcohol sales to it.
I see what you're saying. Now, board members, that there is a visual picture of that on your screen. It is a strip mall. So they're just, they're not adding another building, they're not-
Not adding anything.
They're just-
Just adding the cellar, the alcoholic beverages.
All right, okay. Ms. Sanders, anything else you care to share with us?
No, just, you know, I hate that I live, that that's all behind us, but it backs right up to us.
All right, thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anybody else present who care to speak in opposition to this request? Anyone else care to speak in opposition? Is the applicant present who care to make any other comments relative to what Ms. Sanders said? Because we're recording, tell us your name again and address, please.
Rebecca Walter, 2063 Evergreen Drive, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71118. Well, I'd like to reach out and invite her to come and talk to us because there is no intention of loud music. And if there's, if there's a problem at all, we will work with the community because we don't want a problem in our neighborhood.
All right, ma'am. Did you understand what she said, Ms. Sanders?
Yes.
Yes, great. Thank you very much, ma'am. At this particular time, if there's no further comments, we'll entertain a motion from board members.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Elverson.
Second.
Second by Mr. Joseph. All those in favor, please vote.
Yes.
That motion's carried, thank you very much. Case number 20-158-C zoning request, Moore and Associates. And this is gonna be presented by Mr. Ben Moller.
Good afternoon, everyone. As was stated, this is case 20-158-C. The applicant is Moore and Associates. The owner is Yolanda Burnham. The existing zoning is R2, and they are requesting a zoning change to C1, neighborhood commercial for the purpose of office space. Our recommendation is approval on this, and I'm happy to answer any questions being of.
All right, Mr. Moller, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Ben? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is, Mr. Craig, any comments?
Andy Craig, Moore and Associates, 1324 North Hearn, Suite 301, Shreveport, 71107. This is pretty simple. Dr. Burnham, who you're familiar with from the previous cases, has purchased the existing residence on this lot. She's wanting to renovate, add about 500 square feet to accommodate a nonprofit intervention service that she has. Be nine hours, nine to five. It's pretty low impact, but it will require the C1 zone there, which you can see is on the map. It's, they already C1 around it, so be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
All right, are there any questions for Mr. Craig? Hearing none, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else present who care to speak in favor of this request? Anyone else present care to speak in favor? Anyone present care to speak in opposition to this request? Any opposition to this request? Seeing none, hearing none, we'll entertain a motion, please. Motion by Mr. Rudy. I need a second.
Second.
By Ms. Demartel. All those in favor, please vote. Yes, she voted yes. All right, that motion carries, thank you very much. Next case is case number 20-170-C, special use permit and a site plan. Mr. Moller will do the presentation.
Hello again, everyone. This is case 20-170-C. The applicant is Fairfield Place and the owner is Fairfield Place. It's located at 2213 Fairfield Avenue. The applicant is requesting a special use approval in order to use the existing 378 square foot detached game room as an accessory dwelling unit, and our recommendation is approval on this.
All right, sir. In accordance- Any questions for Mr. Ben? Hearing none, is there an applicant present?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
I'm John Carrery, I'm at twenty-two twenty-one Fairfield Avenue, and I am asking for the board's approval.
Any questions for this gentleman? All right, I understand this is an ancillary dwelling unit, is that what we're talking about?
Yes, sir.
All right. Any questions for this applicant? All right, hearing none, is there anyone else present who care to speak in favor of this applicant? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone present who care to speak in opposition to this applicant? Any opposition to this applicant? Hearing none, will entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Steve Martel.
Second.
Second by Mr. Elberston, all those in favor, please vote.
Yeah.
Motion's carried. Case number twenty dash one seven four dash C, small planned unit development and site plan. Mr., I'm sorry, Ms. Alice will do the presentation.
Right. Good afternoon, again. Uh, the location of the site is thirty-five oh eight Yori Drive. The applicant is requesting a small planning development to allow a sleep clinic in a commercial urban corridor zoning district. The staff has reviewed the proposed amenities list and the submitted site plan. It will be a demo and rebuild at that site. And based on the information provided and evaluation of the area, we are recommending approval.
All right, any questions for Ms. Carrary? Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone present from the Architect LLC? Yes, sir.
Hello, Jeff Spikes, forty-seven forty Richmond Avenue, seven eleven oh six. I'm here representing the owner of the property.
All right, Mr. Spikes, we're glad to have you. Do, are there any questions from board members for Mr. Spikes relative to this healthcare institution that he plans to do? Any questions for Mr. Spikes? All right, sir, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else present who care to speak in favor of this application? Anyone else present who care to speak in favor of this application? Seeing none, anyone care to speak in opposition to this application? Any opposition to this application? Seeing none, will entertain a motion?
Motion to approve with the steps.
Motion to approve with the steps, Mr. Joseph. Second by Mr. Morton. All those in favor, please vote.
Yes.
All right, the motion, that the request is approved. We'll move to case number twenty dash one seven three dash C, UDC amendments, and that will be presented by Mr. Adam Bailey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Adam Bailey, MPC five oh five Travis Suite four forty. Uh, these are Kotex amendments to Article twenty-one of the Shreveport UDC. Uh, these proposed Kotex amendments, which are being presented by the Home Builders Association of Northwest Louisiana, are an attempt to better expedite the building permit process. In their opinion, there are certain constructions, alterations within, within an historic district that should not require review by the Historic Preservation Commission. According to the Home Builders Association, these projects should be reviewed and approved administratively. I want you to be aware that on January fourth, an email was sent to MPC staff by the Historic Preservation Commission, which was presented in your chairs before the meeting, regarding some of the proposed language by the Home Builders Association. Uh, one of their concerns, specific to line A, uh, the language in quote "not viewable from the public right of way of the property's address," according to the HPC, is limited in scope and does not relate to the complete property of an historic property, historic district, sorry. Their second concern is that the proposed language in line B concerning the term facade is problematic. Their argument is that substantial change within a property may constitute more than just the facade. Because this is the Home Builders Association's application, I'm gonna let them answer any of those questions. Uh, but based on the staff analysis, MPC staff is recommending approval.
All right, sir. Is there anyone else here who care to speak in favor of this application?
Good afternoon, I'm Dixie Robertson, I'm the executive officer for the Home Builders Association. Our address is two zero three eight East Seventieth in Shreveport, seven one one zero five. The Home Builders is a professional trade association representing nine parishes with six hundred member companies, and the work that our members do contributes four hundred million dollars annually to our economy, here locally. I always like to throw that out because people always wonder what we're doing over there in that building on East Seventieth. But I am here to represent the residential construction industry. And these changes that we've proposed have just been things that, over the past, I guess it's been about eighteen months, where the Historical Preservation Commission has been meeting and reviewing applications, and they're things that have just kind of, um, as we all knew when the UDC was passed, were gonna manifest as we went through the actual process of it. Um, we've had several of our members have applications that were triggered for the HPC, although they were really, um, things that weren't gonna have a major impact on the neighborhoods that they're located in, I can give you several examples. The concerns that the chairman of the Historical Preservation Commission expressed, um, the reason for the wording for the, um, one A being viewable from the street view of the property address, we've had a couple of cases where, as, if you think about, um, the neighborhoods, specifically, I'm speaking to neighborhoods and not downtown or the commercial areas, a lot of houses go through to the street behind them. Um, and then there was another set of houses that go through to a dead end of another street or an alley that's still in use. My own home goes through, faces three different streets, public streets, but if I was enclosing my back porch, there shouldn't be a requirement for me to have to have that deferred to the commission. We have a back porch that was just heard in last month's meeting. Um, the application, you won't be able to see any of it from the street address. The application was delayed for six weeks because of the timing, and in those six weeks, lumber costs have increased twenty percent in America. So those are the kinds of things that happen when these, um, where the staff's hands are kind of bound by the language, and those are the, the, the situations we're seeking to remedy with these changes.
All right, then. Any questions for this individual? Hearing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who care to speak in favor of this application? Anyone else care to speak in favor? Yes, sir.
I'd just reiterate to you the, the comments that were made by the Historic Preservation Committee, uh, and making certain that you had an opportunity to review those comments. They are the board that actually goes through this process and would not like for their comments to be overlooked. Not that we're trying to stop anything, anything, I'd just like to ensure that their comments are respected as they should be.
All right, sir. Is there anyone else who care to speak in opposition to this request? Any opposition to this request? All right, hearing none, will entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Elberston, and second by Mr. Joseph, that we approve this request, please vote.
Yeah.
All right, motion's approved. Case number twenty dash one seven seven dash C, and twenty dash nineteen dash P, UDC amendment, being presented by Ms. Mary.
Good afternoon. Metropolitan Commissioner is requesting to add a new zoning district, R one ten, to the city of Shreveport and Caddo Parish UDC. The principal purpose is to provide single-family detached dwelling with minimum lots of not less than ten thousand square feet. The Shreveport-Caddo City date May twenty fifteen initially included the R one ten zoning district, however, this district was eliminated from the adopted UDC. Back in time, this zoning district was unnecessary because very few existing lots that existed with these size requirements. The MPC is seeking to add R one ten zoning district to the board current UDC to improve development, community, and subdivision regulation as it is strongly desired by the development community due to market demands and data analysis. Based on staff analysis, review of the above standards, and the fact of record, MPC staff recommend, recommendation is to approve the request is warranted. Thank you, any question?
All right, any questions for this staff member? Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else present who care to speak in favor of this request? Uh, applicant is MPC?
Yeah.
Hearing none, anyone present who care to speak in opposition to this request?
As, as you know, Mr. Chair, you have two applications for the same thing.
Yes, I do.
One in the parish and one in the city.
All right.
That's that you take them separate.
I appreciate.
As you know, we, we recommend this because this is accumulation of, uh, the, the situation that we were talking about at Lakeside, Long Lake on Lakeside.
Yes, sir.
I'll get it right eventually.
I, I'm with you, I'm with you. At this particular time, will entertain a motion on case number twenty dash one seven seven dash C. So move by Mr. Morton? Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Second by Mr. Joseph, all those in favor, please vote, yes?
Yeah.
That motion's carried. I'll entertain a motion on case number twenty dash nineteen dash P.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. DeMarto to approve, can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Curtis, all those in favor, please vote.
Vote.
That motion's carried. Next case, twenty dash one one eight dash C, UDC amendment, Mr. Adam Bailey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, this case was first presented to the MPC board at the October twenty twenty MPC public hearing, where the board voted to recommend this application for approval. During the December eighth, twenty twenty, Shreveport City Council meeting at the request of Councilman Nicholson, uh, the city council voted unanimously to remand these amendments back to the MPC for reconsideration. Since then, language has been added to require that an approval of a special use permit for any vehicle dealership with outdoor storage and display that is proposed within two hundred feet of a residentially zoned district is, has been added to the amendments, and we think this will be suffice in satisfying Councilman Nicholson. Uh, we are voting, we are recommending approval of these amendments. Any question?
Any questions for Mr. Bailey relative to this one? All right, sir, thank you. Anyone else care to speak in favor? Anyone present who care to speak in opposition to this request? Any opposition? Hearing none, will entertain a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Joseph?
Second.
Second by, um...
Roker.
Mr. Roker, all those in favor, please vote.
Curtis, you vote.
Curtis, did you vote? All right, that motion's approved. At this particular time, we'll move, uh, this ends our public hearing, and we'll move to item number twenty on the agenda, whole business. I don't believe there are any committee chair reports, I will say this much, um, as chairman of the board for this particular twenty twenty-one, we will be making committee assignments, and they'll be in place prior to the February meeting. And I trust that you will embrace your assignment without question. And I appreciate that. And I also want to comment about this, twelve months ago today was a tough day in this change. And I want to say how much I appreciate you guys, and let's moving right on through the way it's going today, it's just been just, just great. I'll stop talking at this time and turn the meeting over to Mr. Clark.
Mr. Chair, uh, first, first of all, I'd like to acknowledge to the, the board members the importance, and thank you for the actions that you take of the day in reference to, uh, completing the ethics training that has to be completed, uh, every year. We have to take the same ethics training, and the ethics training protects you, because we want each board member properly protected and ensure that there are no conflicts of interest, uh, any ethical violations. And it's a wonderful, wonderful training, I just love sitting in front of the computer for an hour and going through the process, but, uh, and I, I have to always get it done in December for some strange reason. Stephen does it in January of each year, but, uh, I generally wait until December, and sometimes it's December the thirtieth, but I, I share with you that it's very important, and, uh, I, I, I just commend you for the, the way that you are addressing possible ethical violations. Secondly, uh, we have been, it has been requested of, uh, the, the, for me to ask the board if it is interested in having virtual meetings instead of live meetings. Uh, and this was a request, uh, point of interest from a parish commissioner that believed that, uh, by not having, and as you know, the Caddo Parish Commission meets virtually, but by not having virtual meetings, uh, we deny opportunities to citizens that want to address the commission, uh, but are afraid because of the possibility of contracting COVID, uh, the virus, uh, from having the opportunity to, uh, make presentations to the board. By him reaching out, I did, uh, reach out to the MPC's attorney, Mr. Rick John, because we don't believe that, uh, we have that option, uh, to have virtual meetings, but when a parish commissioner, uh, makes that request to us, we, we feel that it's necessary to respond to him with the information, and, uh, and I, I just shared from Mr. John, he did share with me that, you know, that may be something that you might want to just reach out to the board and see if they're even interested, or if they're very comfortable with having live meetings. Uh, I hope I made that real clear, that it was a request, Mr. John asked me to reach out to you and make sure that you had no interest in having, uh, virtual meetings, uh, and that you were comfortable with live meetings, and he would check with the governor's orders to make sure whether or not we could have such meetings anyway. There's also been a request, it's been a very busy week, there's also been a request to allow for, and we're, we're looking through IT, working through the IT department of the city, uh, persons are, are interested in possibly addressing the board via Zoom. Uh, and, uh, and we're, we're working on that, uh, you can see the difficulties we are having, and we had the same problem with the city council with Councilman Fleury, as we have with Mrs. Smith, uh, it's, it's trying to get that process in place, but we are reaching out to, to IT and requesting them to consider, uh, making, Mr. Fleury had said it, but then he got, uh, council was in remission, he was able to come back, and I think that it sort of fell by the wayside. But we're, we're trying to find if there's a way for citizens to be able to address you where you can see them, and they can see you, and, and they can actually ask any questions that they may have of you. So that was another request that we had, that we are working on, trying to get it resolved. We are still working very hard with the Neighborhood Participation Plan. Uh, we strongly believe that, and you saw some of them today, we strongly believe that there are so many values to placing... We strongly believe that there are so many values to placing applicants and neighborhoods together. We, I'm sure that we will receive some negative fallback from the actions today. And there may be other negative fallbacks from your decision with the dog training facility on Keithville Green, Keithville String Ridge, String Ridge Road. But we strongly believe, and we share this with you, just, just for informational purposes, that it, we have to come up with a methodology in order to get people to sit down and talk. Generally, people don't want to talk. They want to come to your meetings. They want to come to city council meetings. They want to come to parish commission meetings and, and voice their oppositions. And a lot of times, as you well know, a lot of times, the information that they have is not accurate information. That if they had accurate information, that they would sit down with many business owners because we found that business owners are not bad people at all. Most business owners live in a resident themselves, as we do. And they are receptive to, to concerns that residents have. Our problem continues to be that we have not quite connected that, been able to construct that bridge that connect the two. But we are doing everything that we possibly can to encourage neighborhoods to meet with applicants, to talk about situations. And like I said, most times, the business owners will come back to you and then you have much more of a leverage to talk to them about doing things other than neighborhood associations said, we just don't want it. We don't need it. And they don't even know, in a lot of instances, what they don't want and what they don't need. And that has nothing to do in any negative fashion whatsoever with the neighborhood associations. We're just trying to, because we believe strongly that if we bring people together, we can start that vision of Shreveport that we are all interested in. And when you have property that's totally undeveloped, you have to know that you're paying taxes on it, that a landowner in a lot of instances is very interested in, in receiving some returns on that property. And they are, they're, what we found, like the Captain Street Neighborhood Association, is that neighborhoods are wonderful people. They know what they want. They know what they share to tolerate. And if you, if you tell them, the business owners, what your concerns are, as we did with the bar today, you know, business owners in many instances will come and respond and say, we will address that, we will take care of that. And this is my number, if you have any problems. This is how you get in touch with me, and we will immediately deal with that concern. I, I just, we're just very hopeful in twenty twenty one that we can bring together, every time you have rezoning, map amendments, special use permit applications before you, when they get to your meeting and face you at the horse you they will have met in prior to our meeting and worked out a lot of the differences. It's just a goal, and we have to keep that goal alive. As you know, we're in the process of, I think it starts tomorrow. We will start bringing out, kicking off the touchless permitting process. Web page for the NPC. Adam Bailey has worked religiously on this process. We contracted with a, a national company that does this type of web page operations in major cities around the country. I think that you're gonna be extremely proud of the work that has been done in relationship to this. I think it's gonna be impressive. It's gonna be something that people from all of the country, they're interested in coming to Shreveport. They can get all of the information from one place. They can do permitting, they can do all of the stuff that they're trying to do. And I think that this is gonna improve the concept and, and the response to Shreveport. As I continue to say, we are very proactive and pro-business active in this staff. We are, we're doing everything we can to attract businesses. As you can see by your, your caseload, we haven't slowed down with the number of cases. Reginald will, will share with you, most meetings, that even though the trend with certificate of occupancies is, is home-based businesses, but we are still increasing businesses and maintaining at a similar level to we did in twenty nineteen. So I think that's truly commendable for the city of Shreveport. And most people don't really realize or know that. But we are still doing much business through the permitting system. And this is just gonna help out tremendously. I will lastly share with you, I listen to you. We, we love to get the planners involved in the cases. They, they do all the research. They, they have relationships with the applicants. I don't know if you noticed today, Mr. Stephen Jean worked very closely with them. For some reason, planners like to talk forever. I asked him to come up with a remedy. And I wanted to appreciate him for coming up with that remedy today because I think they were short, succinct, and that you did not get bored and you did not get tired of them. But I, I, I just wanna continue that process because I think they provide you wonderful information and really make applicants feel comfortable on the day of the hearing. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Well, I, I hope that, thank you for that. And I, I hope someone shares that bit of information with, with Mr. Dale Cogan once he is present.
I was hoping he would be here today. And he said he would, but I guess something happened.
The one thing, and I leapfrogged on the agenda, and I apologize, but there is an issue on here that was deferred and continued from December second, public hearing. And this has to do with the resolution to halt the acceptance of new annexation applications for a period of six months. I know that we chewed on this off and on for more than one meeting in the past. I heard what board members were saying in the last couple of months. But I didn't hear an overwhelming support for this resolution. And, but at this particular time, I would entertain just some comments, since we're moving so well, relative to how you feel about this, whether we should do it case by case. I remember recently, there was a development in the form of a supermarket in South Shreveport, off the loop, that, that was very appropriate for the location and so forth. But we had to make an exception for that. But my guess, the question is, do we want to do a wholesale moratorium on six months? Or would the board be interested in having the opportunity to deal with these requests on a case by case basis?
I would personally recommend case by case.
Case by case.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Curtis and a second by Mr. Emerson to deal with this business of annexation as opposed to a moratorium for six months to deal with applicants on a case by case basis. At this particular time, we'll entertain a vote. All those in favor, please vote yes. Oppositions, no?
Yes, ma'am, are you still there?
Go ahead. All right. The motion's carried. Do we have any comments from anyone else on the board, present?
Just on a different matter, is that okay?
Yes, sir, go right ahead.
I recently had a, a conversation with a, with a business owner, and I think it was related to this agenda, where they were trying to get the feedback from, from one of the cases. The sign that we put on the front of the businesses, it says, song, changing song or something regarding the song change. And it was just a special permit. So it was kind of this, like, uh, it wasn't, it wasn't providing the, the right information for the public because it was not a song change. It was just a special permit. Do we have signs that say special permit? Or, or we just have signs that say song changing?
Mr. Clark?
We only have those two signs, the, the NPC and the ZBA sign. But we are, we have, I don't know where I heard it from, but I did hear that same concern. And we are gonna be looking at possibly doing signs that, that will say subdivision and special use permits. I agree with you wholeheartedly. Sometimes it causes confusion unnecessarily. But we, we've been looking at, we've improved the signs. Initially, we had paper signs, cardboard signs. And on days like today, when it rained, they would disappear. Mr. Jordan has assured me that the signs are, that they're waterproof now and that they're staying and that inspectors are going by checking them. But we're, we're looking at that and have a report for your next meeting.
Mr. Roker. All right, Mr. Roker, thank you very much for that. So that's very insightful. Any other comments? We'll entertain a motion at this time. Motion that we are doing.
Second.
Meeting's begun.